I think the appropriate place for us to start is with a little history about what's brought us here.
I don't know who you want to.
Oh, I'm Tim Sheehan from the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency, I apologize.
Thank you.
The off-site improvements that are associated with this project are part of the land disposition agreement that's associated with the development project and that's a contractual agreement between the city of Norwalk, Pogo developers, and the redevelopment agency. And it spells out the specific responsibilities associated with each of the parties. In that agreement, as it relates to these specific improvements, the redeveloper, i.e. Pogo, is responsible for developing an infrastructure plan that is ultimately acceptable and meets the specifications of the Department of Public Works and i.e. the city of Norwalk. And then that particular plan, once it has met the requirements of the Public Works Department, then gets launched on its approval process and that approval process is going to involve a number of bodies. Obviously, it would need to go to the traffic authority and that is intended to be its next step. Then it would need to go to the taxing district, that would be the step after the parking authority. And then it would need to come back and ultimately get approved by the redevelopment agency. And I don't know, are you actually bringing the plan to the common council, Bruce?
No.
No?
Do your plans ever include talking to business people who make their living down there?
Yeah. Property owners?
Again, that's the whole process of this.
Okay.
So this is.
I didn't hear them included in the process.
Well, that's why we're having a public meeting on this so that you can hear about it and you know about it. And there's, as I indicated, there's multiple public meetings that are going to come along the way so that we can get public feedback. So there's been no official approval by anybody in terms of governmental body with regards to the plan. That's why we're having the meeting so that we can hear from folks that are impacted by it. And if there's a need to accommodate changes to the plan, we can accommodate those changes.
That's great.
Okay?
Tim, I might ask a question.
Can I just go through it and then we'll get to questions? So, because I'm gonna have the folks from Redness and Meat go through.
No, my only point is we met here about seven or eight months ago and they looked like different plans than the mayor and you and Hal Albarth and myself and the first district sort of looked at at that time. And these look completely different.
That's what I'm gonna get to in terms of the process.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, what was charged back to the redeveloper was to come up with design concepts for the improvements. And there's been, over, since two thousand and seven, when Redness and Meat, I think, first began work on this project, there's been at least four different concepts. Frank, I think you've seen just about every one of them.
They keep changing, I mean.
They do change. But those weren't finalized plans that we could bring to the public to basically say, "The plan meets the specifications of the Department of Public Works." Because the department hadn't fully seen, they hadn't been fully developed in terms of engineering plans. So now they have been fully developed, they have been reviewed by the Department of Public Works. The department believes that the plan as designed right now meets its specifications. So therefore, the public process is beginning in terms of understanding what the concerns are and if there's a need for further modification to the plan. So this is the developer's plan that's been submitted back to the department. The Department of Public Works has determined that it meets its specifications and now it's a process of going through the governmental approvals. So with that, I think I'd like to have Brett from Redness and Meat come up and walk you through the plan so that we can understand what we're talking about and then we'll have a little bit more in terms of questions and answers.
My name is Brett Holesworth, I'm a civil engineer with Redness and Meat. So our firm has developed this, working with DPW, going back and forth about the redesigns. And this is, like Tim said, what we feel is a good product. So what you see here is the existing conditions and the proposed. The existing, you have this turn, well, everyone knows what it looks like. You know, there's a lot of different movements, it's not a very consolidated intersection. People have to wait for turning, turning movements and there's a lot of just different crossings. It's not very pedestrian friendly to get from this side to this side. There's no direct link except for across the street and then multiple crossings. So, what we came up with is a more conventional T-intersection between the four streets. It consolidates the, all the turning movements from Wall Street into three lanes. It's three lanes now, but, and it'll remain three lanes except for the right turn. That used to be this small alley or whatever you like to call it. Now it's a part of the road. There is gonna be one crossing to get from this side to the other. And then you can get through here, I'll talk about this in just a second. There is gonna be another crossing higher up on Wall Street where it's less wide of an intersection. It's twenty-eight feet at this point. It's, it is about forty, fifty feet at that intersection. The, so the traffic lights will all be redesigned, reinstalled with, we have a traffic engineer onboard who has studied the turning movements, the traffic signaling, how it relates to other areas and how the car queuing is impacted. They've analyzed this design, they've said that it meets the standards that DPW has established. So, just going over some of the movements. From West Avenue, it's going north. It's gonna be a left, a straight, and a right. Similar to this, except for, once again, it's consolidated into a one stream of turning instead of this islands that has the offshoot. Going west from Wall Street, it's the same three lanes, two left turns. No, I'm sorry, a left turn, a left and straight through Tamont and then a right up to Belden. So that consolidates that portion.
Can I ask a quick, am I turning right and then making another left and going that way?
Yes. No, that, this area is really just to access this property. See, the existing conditions, he, this property was accessed through this through lane.
Right.
So now, normal traffic just to get off through Wall Street bypasses that and turns up that alley.
Okay, correct.
This is just to access this property. And then they, they pull in from this side and then they exit, leaving East on Wall Street.
And what property is there right now? What is that?
Uh, what's that?
It's, it's, it's the help Michelle's property, it's the one-story building. It's a lotus.
It's been like a dance place?
It's next, next to City Market?
Yes.
Yes, next to it.
It's a dancing, yes.
A lot of pleasure.
It's the.
It's a dance place.
Like.
Right.
Okay. So, my understanding is the town or the city has been working with that owner?
We had, obviously, because that's one of the more significantly impacted properties, we had an independent meeting with that property owner, discussed with them the impacts associated with that and reviewed all of the implications with them and they're fully up to speed on the plan.
So, so that was the one issue we wanted to.
I would just, you say fully up to speed, but they don't function during the day. They're only open at night, so it's a whole different ballgame for them.
All I'm indicating is that they have all the information.
Well, it's nice somebody got it.
Yeah, we didn't get any information on this.
It's really very disconcerting that nobody bothered to knock on the door the other side of Wall Street where you're cutting out all that driveway.
Again, this is the whole process, this is the public review of the.
But you took the time to talk to somebody and not everybody.
We, we had a conversation with one of the most impacted properties in the area.
I disagree with you on that statement and I go to.
Okay, so, so.
But, but hold on, let's just finish up with the plan and then come back to your questions and concerns.
Sure. So, we impacted on, we talked about this intersection. These, these two sides won't change except for just new handicap ramps and crosswalks. So, turning on to Wall Street, we have these back-up forty-five-degree angle parking spaces. Now, I know it's atypical of what people have been used to, but it is, it has been shown to be a safer turning movement and I'll kind of explain that if you don't get it. You're pulling in and when you want to get into the parking spaces, you back up and you have, you're able to see every direction when you're backing into the space. It's a relatively easy backup movement. When you're exiting, you have far more visibility with oncoming traffic because you're at the front of the parking space, not at the back. If you've ever backed into, backed out of a space on a diagonal, it's very, you know, treacherous and if there's fast cars moving, it can cause a lot more accidents. So, this, you know, it's not what people are used to, but it has been shown.
Where, where can you see that?
In.
Where are they?
Are they examples locally?
Where the forty-five-degree angles throughout the country.
Yeah, but not only in my world.
South Norwalk, South Norwalk Elizabeth Street. They have back-end parking, they have about a half a dozen back-end parking.
That's a new change there?
No, it's been there for a while.
For a long time, yeah.
Is there anywhere else you can see those in any, any other towns, any other downtowns around here, Fairfield County?
Well, I think this is an important question for the city to answer because this is the city's determination that that's how we wanted the parking. There's multiple iterations of this and Frank, you can certainly attest to that. There, there was consideration of front-end parking, there's consideration of back-end parking and this plan has changed a number of times based on where the city determines it wants to be. So, the department can certainly answer the question as to why it wants to have back-end parking.
So, the city's gonna.
I've seen it in several areas around the, around the country. There are many, many, many other cities around the country that are utilizing it. This past December, I was in Austin, Texas and they have it all over Austin, Texas. Two-lane back-in, works rather well. I talked to some of the people out there, I happen to be there for a different reason.
I, I'm sure it works in Austin, Texas.
Why wouldn't it work here?
They don't have snow.
They don't have snow, I was thinking that too, but, but why, why we have to be, it seems like we're the guinea pig on this. In other words, why doesn't New Canaan have it or Darien have it or, or Westport have it? These are the towns that are around us, not Austin, Texas.
Okay, I hear you.
You know, it, it seems just.
What is, what is your objection to it?
Well, you, you've got, you used to have four lanes going both ways on Wall Street, right? Correct? Now we have three lanes going both ways. And now this is how many lanes going both ways?
Three lanes.
It's only one lane.
This is, this is right here, this is three lanes?
Oh, you mean, you mean in the middle there? Oh, it's.
No, it's, it's two lanes now. So we went from four lanes to each way? I'm sorry, if I should, you're facing this way.
No, go ahead.
But two lanes going both ways, then three lanes, now two lanes. Okay, are we gonna have more people living down here?
I don't know, are we?
You don't know?
Yeah, I do know, Pogo's gonna have a lot of people living.
Are we gonna have more people living down there?
Yeah.
Then you do know.
Of course I know.
Okay, that's why I'm asking you. Doesn't seem like we should have more traffic. I thought you said, "I don't know." First you said, "I don't know," anyway, it doesn't matter, you do know. But wouldn't, shouldn't we have more lanes?
So, do you wanna take the traffic, do you wanna take the parking away?
No, I, I think you should at least have three lanes. That's what you have now.
Then you're gonna take the parking away?
You would have to lose parking either on, either on one side in order to accommodate that.
Because of the angled parking, with your angled parking.
Make that desirable, make that desirable.
Well, you would.
Viable.
I mean, how many, how many?
By that angled parking, how many more spaces are you getting on the, on the south side of Wall Street? I can see parallel, what would you fit in that one spot there?
I believe about six or seven spots extra by the angled parking, correct? Yeah, well, more than that.
Yeah, I can almost see it there.
There's eighteen here.
You got the other, you only got the other section.
There's ten here, so you, you're gaining eight spaces.
Eight spaces.
And then you're also gaining one, two, three, four, five, six where you'd probably get one.
I'd like to, could I point something out or should I wait? I just, if you don't mind, if I can come out and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've given my spiel, so feel free.
This area here that you're taking away, all the parking that was in front of these businesses, what is this gonna be, just grass area?
Uh, it's gonna be a combination of grass and sidewalks.
So, if we're looking for more par, I don't know the merits of back-end, front-end. I understand that we're gonna get a lot more parking there. I'm almost willing to give it a try, it's paint, if we had to, we could always change it to be front-end parking or go back to parallel. Why don't we utilize this area for more parking? It would help the library, it would help the businesses, businesses especially.
Let me, let me, and we're on the same page here.
Yeah.
Seven, seven years ago, here, here, you can see it better. We used to have two spaces here, there's a fire hydrant there, can't have it anymore. We used to have five spaces here. They took this away here, they took this three spaces and they made it two spaces.
Could you step aside while you're trying so we can see it?
Yeah, they can't see, step to the side, they just can't see.
Okay. This little island here, okay, which is, this is currently the way it is. There used to be two places here. There's a fire hydrant here. About seven years ago, they took these two places away. There used to be five places here. They took these two away, they took these five places here and put two places here. Nobody said anything. I went down and saw Ed Busanti and we got, instead of five places and two, we got three places here. And that's the way that is.
Well, you said nobody said, nobody asked you, they just did it.
They just did it. And, and that's a huge, you know, you're in this business, right? How much is this, how much is this parking space worth to this business right here?
A lot, a lot.
How much?
It's a lot.
How, how much, a dollar?
Oh, no, it's, it's a significant.
How much, we're looking fifty thousand dollars?
It's a significant.
I'm looking for a number.
It's a significant advantage to a business.
Please, take a guess. You know it's worth fifty to a hundred thousand dollars.
It's, it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Over fifty thousand dollars. So this place here had seven places. At fifty thousand dollars is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now it's got three places, a hundred and fifty thousand or more, and now it's got nothing.
And show what your business is, that's the problem.
And, and this is where I own this property right here.
Yeah.
Tim, is there a way that we can talk about this?
Hold on two seconds, let me just respond to this. There's, there's a couple of issues that are going on here. Obviously, the preservation of on-street parking was a major, major concern in terms of how this is all laying out. Now, if there needs to be a reallocation of how the on-street parking is laid out, that's something that we need to take a look at. The plan sought to maximize and actually increase by, I wanna say it was three or four spaces, the amount of existing on-street parking between what's here and what's here. But, obviously, if there's concerns about where that's placed, those concerns need to come to.
I've been forty-six years, same location, long time. I'm an established business, I'm retail, I'm unusual. There is very little retail on Wall Street.
I completely agree with you.
But then, first of all, why wouldn't anybody pick up the phone and ask me what's going on a little bit?
Again, that's the whole purpose of this discussion.
Yeah, but I mean, these are all drawn up, these are all done. You know what I mean, it's just a little bit of input to.
The issue is that none of what you're seeing has been approved by any governmental body. So to say that it's all done is just a fallacy.
Yeah, I just don't understand.
And, and the number of times that the concept plans have changed before we've even brought anything for a public review is numerous. So to say that this is fixed and done is wrong.
It's, it's really, when I see the traffic that's here now and it moves pretty well, I, I agree with you. The only thing I agree with you is this is a problem because people go from here over to here. That's a problem.
Yeah.
But, in my mind, there's, this can't be the only answer to that problem.
There is no only one answer to any problem.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
I mean, because I think the number one red flag with this is that you've got people, pedestrians, that wanna walk and that's a dangerous situation.
Right.
But I, I think.
Well, there's been people that have actually died there.
Absolutely. Divine Brothers Mixer hit somebody right here, okay? And it wasn't the driver's fault, it was, anyway.
So we're, we're all clear on that, that we need to make the crossings safer?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and there's a million people across from the old taxing district parking lot, across to the post office and there's no crosswalk there right now either, right? We're on the same page with that. So to go down here to the corner where.
Nobody's doing that.
Exactly. And that's, and that's as much of a problem, right? And we don't, I don't see any crosswalk over here.
Well, this is, this is the.
I'm sorry, I don't see any, so here's.
There's a crosswalk right here.
Yeah, but this is where the, the library is, correct?
Library, yeah.
Okay, but the post office is here.
Post office is right here. They're coming right.
No, post office is right here.
This is that swap.
This is the post office.
Yeah.
This is where.
But you're coming right through here.
The post office is here, you've got the parking lot right here. There's no way that those people are gonna walk up here, come here and go to the post office. I guarantee you. They don't do it now, they're not gonna do it down the road.
It is, it's not advised to put crossing, crosswalks, you know, halfway through an intersection.
And do it in other towns all the time? I'm just telling you, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but they do it all the time.
Okay.
Okay? So, this is where you're gonna have the next person that's gonna be hit by a car.
Well, we've got one.
Just go out there in the morning and look at that, I'm not kidding.
Not to say that you can't do it.
We can look at it, yeah.
Not to say that you can't do it because we've got it done right here.
Right.
I mean, that's certainly something that we can take.
This is the crosswalk right here that currently exists.
Yeah.
Okay? And, so you've got two lanes going one way and one lane going the other way, okay? Now you're gonna make that narrow, correct? You are, this is narrower than it is now, right? I'm just saying that you've gotta have more people living down here. How you could make that narrower, just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, the, the, part of the backup parking is there's gonna be less, you know, queuing.
Well, everybody that, everybody that stops to back up, it's gonna take them twenty seconds, thirty seconds.
Keep going.
Something like that.
If you drive like me, it's gonna take you five minutes.
Not only that, I have a small vehicle.
So everybody stops.
Hold on, one person at a time.
So any, so everybody stops, in other words. So someone wants to back up, five minutes, let's say a minute, okay, whatever it is. Everybody stops. There's no other way. But right now, you've got three lanes here. There used to be four lanes and now there's two lanes. I just don't see how you can do that.
And I was just gonna comment, I, I don't really care about the backup parking, but I'm thinking to myself 'cause I have a small vehicle and we have a lot of SUVs, that I'm not even gonna know there's an empty space till I almost pass. If there's a large car, as I'm coming this way, if there's an empty space here, but there's an SUV here, I'm gonna be halfway here before I realize, hit my brakes and then try to back up.
Then you can slow down, but on, on the other side.
It helps the person behind me slow down.
On the other flip side, if you were to pull in and you have a small vehicle and there's a huge Suburban next to you, you can't see the entire way backing out.
You are absolutely right on that, so I guess, I guess it's a two-way door.
Which is much more dangerous than slamming on your brakes and you could just, you could approach slowly if you're expecting to park and then back up.
No, you're right, 'cause the other way it's a problem too.
Because the other way is much dangerous.
But also with this, you know, not just my husband's business, but there are businesses here that get deliveries. Those trucks have to pull up here to get to them and at least now they could pull up over here, they are out of the way and bring things in. Where are they gonna go here? They can't come from the back to get in there with those eighteen-wheel trucks.
Okay.
Well, let's have a conversation, one of the issues, Malone and McBroom actually was doing the, the traffic analysis for the project. So, we will touch base with Malone and McBroom about the concerns in terms of what the traffic flow is coming through here.
Not just me, there's, there's a computer store, whichever.
As I said, there's other businesses.
Computer store, a liquor store, you know, my store, different stores.
The deli.
Everybody, right now, this is all no parking, okay? And, you know, when it used to be chief railing, now mayor railing. You know, he said, he goes, "You know what, you really need a designated loading zone there." You know, we kinda don't, it's kinda like a gray area. All of, you know, the big liquor beer trucks and the soda trucks and every, they park there for fifteen, twenty minutes. They unload, they wheel them all down here, 'cause this is all parking, they can't park here, right? They can't obviously park in the road, nobody can get by. So they used to park, well, they do now, they, this is the current map. So they, so they park all here and they're there for twenty minutes and it works. You know, it's not the perfect, you know, it works, it really works. Every week, I get an eighteen-wheel truck, it works. You know, and it, everybody's kinda happy and it's a big thing.
So adding some sort of loading area maybe in this area as you're approaching, I'm assuming they're coming from Wall Street?
They're coming from this way and these are big trucks.
I mean, this is, this is, you know, I, I don't, I would have to consult with Malone and McBroom but, and the DPW about adding some sort of loading area.
Getting back to my original question, why can't we utilize that area?
Well, I was just going there.
Additional parking and also loading, there's a lot of room there.
Yeah. Obviously, this area here is not reflected in the new plan. And that's the taxing district's property. And the taxing district had a concern. Obviously, now we're out listening to public concerns, but the taxing district wanted to have some sense, rightfully so, that what it was losing in terms of this, there was a replacement of that open space. And that is what this ultimately is becoming.
Wouldn't the taxing district love to see more parking for the library as opposed to an island green that goes nowhere?
There was a concern with regards to removing open space in the corridor and the need to replace that open space. But, that's not to say that the taxing, the taxing district isn't evolving on that position, but that's, those were the starting bases for the planning process. So that, that's why this ultimately came to be.
I do wanna say, before you get it, I, I just wanted to.
Okay, I don't wanna keep pounding you, go ahead.
I, I do wanna just also point out, where this is being closed off, you're gaining two spaces right here on Belden Street. So, the width of this, your two, your three existing would go to two on this side. So you're not losing all of them, I just wanted to, to point that out, that you are having two spaces.
The biggest, the biggest thing, and it's for anybody who is on this street, as of any downtown, is parking.
Of course.
And, we just continue to lose parking. And the other big thing is with the courthouse, and this is an ongoing thing, this is nothing new. Because you can't get in, oh, I can't think of the name of the street where, I'm sorry.
Bianton?
Uh, not Bianton, no, where the, yeah, where the, where the buses are. Burnell, because you can't come from the courthouse and take a left in Burnell and go in that parking garage. You've got all the people, have no idea that, that don't know Norwalk, that don't know where to park and they can't figure out Wall Street, River Street and around the corner there. And this is forever, this has been going on twenty, thirty years. That they just take these available spots and that's a, that's a real issue. I, I mean, I say it like, because some things that are so, people are so accustomed to for thirty years, they say, you know, it's the way it is and they're not gonna change it. But that's a huge, if that was solved, that's a huge thing. That's a huge thing, I think you really, you know, instead of, instead of taking this.
There were advocates to move that out of that area altogether in terms of the pulse point.
Well, not, not, but just to put a lane in or whatever, to park from, from Belden to go in the parking garage. All those, all those people go into the courthouse. It's, anyway.
Tim, I wanna get to the, the library piece.
How did I guess that, Patsy?
As a trustee of the library. The crosswalk, the hatch marks obviously are for new improved crossing.
Correct.
The existing one is at the same level as the proposed new ones?
Elevation you're doing, or?
No, quality, dimension.
Oh, it'll be.
Visibility.
Yeah, it'll be newer, it'll be, you know.
It'll be consistent with what's outside the mansion.
So why, why aren't, why isn't that area gray hatched as well?
Oh, at this crossing?
Yes, that crossing.
That's a good question. Well, these were new changes for, you know, new curbs. Yeah, I, I honestly don't, haven't looked at the quality of these handicap ramps and crosswalks, but yeah, it's, it's worth.
Hand signaling and all the rest of.
Yeah. The, the crosswalks, the, you know.
Where we can make it a box, it will be a box.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see a box on a plant so that it doesn't get forgotten.
You're right.
Or it becomes an add-alternate to the bit, so I'd like you to address that.
Sure.
I'll write it in right now.
You put the back of this back-end parking, again, there's something I don't understand here. Say I'm going northbound on West and we're a long line of cars. Say I'm going northbound on West, and we're a long line of cars. We're doing twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, so the cars are relatively close together. We all make the turn, and I say, oh, there's a spot, now I come to a stop. Now, the car behind me, he's gonna pull up pretty much all the way to the back of my car. And so I turn and I, and I'm going, well, now what do I do? I can't back up. He's, you know, he's, he's stuck because he's got a whole lot of cars behind him, so I don't understand how that works.
I'm not a traffic engineer, and, you know, uh, uh, the, the issue of this is the city's determination of what the standard is that it wants. When we started this process in two thousand and eight, and then carried it forward, it was the, the department's position that it was only going to support back-end parking. And then there was a change and a shift in that, and said, no, we wanna have the plan modified to reflect front-end parking. So the plan was modified to reflect front-end parking. Now, we're back to back-end parking. So, you know, there's been modifications and involvement on the city's end as to how it wants to deal with the parking. So, at the end of the day, the call is ultimately DPW's to make as to what standard it wants. But, it's been a longstanding requirement, going back to Dicklin Arts and Hal Albert, that they would not present to the traffic authority anything that wasn't back-end parking.
Your scenario that you're referring to would be the same thing if somebody was gonna try to parallel park.
Yes.
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same. In other words, you, you got your signal light and the guy's right on your tail, and you can't move in until, so, you know, I thought the same thing of what you're referring to.
Except it makes it easier here, this is easier of a movement than, than parallel, because you're just one turn and not back.
It's gonna present its problems, so I'm sure, so does parallel.
It does also, it does also impact, you know, what other modes of transportation you can allow in the street. If you have front-end parking, the potential for you to allow any type of bicycle use becomes pretty prohibitive, because then you have them backing up into a bicycle lane.
And you're, like you said, if you got an SUV next to you, you're blind.
So, is, is this, would you change things, are you thinking this being a residential area mainly? Or, for, or set up for retail, or?
It's a mixed-use district, the intent is to have it be a mixed-use district.
Okay, so, but what was the reasoning of, because you're, you're confining the traffic?
The, the intent is to actually slow traffic down a bit.
Trying to slow it down.
Would you propose that the business owners in Sono would be greatly aided if you took away the parking and the sidewalks and made it two lanes in every direction, because there's clearly a congestion issue in Sono? When you try to come down into those restaurants, you have to slow down, there's congestion, cars cannot get through easily. There's a major problem with that.
You know, don't-
And you could, but you, you have to realize this, congestion of that sort actually benefits a retail area. People slow down, once, once people slow down, it makes it easy to get into parking spaces and out of parking spaces. Pedestrians all of a sudden feel comfortable. Wall Street pedestrians don't feel too comfortable, because you have two lanes of traffic, if they go to cross, they're not crossing twenty feet, two lanes of ten, they're crossing forty feet. And that's more dangerous, that's why pedestrians get killed on multi-lane roads of higher speed traffic. Pedestrians rarely get killed on two-lane roads. So, there's a huge improvement to pedestrians, which translates to an improvement to retail, because you get traffic, you get people saying, I wanna walk around here, this is a nice place to hang out. I'll go into this bar and then walk off the street and get the next thing.
That's why the bumpouts are there on Wall Street, show them where the bumpout is, by the, and we, we've done that to slow the traffic down.
Is that similar with Water Street in front of, like, Prime, where it kind of juts out a little?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. That slows the traffic down, that's the whole purpose of it, really.
Otherwise, you could've got about another ten cars.
Yeah, we wanna slow them down, especially at that crosswalk. Then when you come through, and just as it was outlined before, the back-end parking happens quicker than parallel parking. And, once you get used to it, it works out rather well.
You've been asking.
Thanks, Mike Mueschak, I'm a landscape architect, licensed in Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey. I always say that just because I know what I'm look, I know what I'm talking about when it comes to urban design. Even though there are people who say I don't. Usually, people are stuck in the old ways of thinking. Norwalk is transitioning from a suburban to, back to the way it was, actually a hundred years ago, an urban dense neighborhood. These are growing pains. We're used to having Wall Street being dead, trucks can park anywhere, they can unload anywhere. We're used to having wide streets that are empty. All this is gonna change. What we are creating is what every other city is creating around the country. This is nothing new, this is nothing unique. We are creating an urban environment that's walkable and bikeable. Retail sales in these neighborhoods are generally twenty percent higher than in neighborhoods with multiple lanes. This is why every main street in, across the country, and every urban design school, and every engineer is learning about road diets, reducing that speedway, which happened in the nineteen fifties and sixties when they widened roads and all, and favored cars. So, I'm gonna say that I have tried, I do road trips every year, and I've traveled around the country, and I've seen reverse angle parking, used it, and I've seen it successful. And if people in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Dayton, Ohio, and Louisville, Kentucky, and every other city I can think of that I've been to in the last four or five years, has reverse angle parking, and it's easy, and it's successful, and it's no different than parallel parking, we have a mindset here that somehow Norwalkers are too stupid to accept something new. Which I think is crazy, okay? Connecticut's a little behind the times when it comes to biking infrastructure and things like reverse angle parking. But, I've been told this was my idea, it's not. DPW knows, they know what's going on out in the world. They knew that reverse angle parking reduces injuries and accidents by forty percent. If we were gonna just keep head-in parking, we're basically saying injuries and accidents don't matter to us. Only convenience of people who don't wanna learn a new way to park. And every city that's done this has gone and, and come back later and said, this has been very successful. The merchants love it, it actually makes loading your car safer, it's much safer for pedestrians. It's much safer for bikes, of course, because people don't get clobbered. And, you know, if somebody gets killed down here on a bicycle, because somebody insisted, stood up and said, I think front-end parking is, is the way we wanna do it, how are they gonna feel? You know, and I really do, I support DPW and the redevelopment agency on this reverse angle parking. And my only disappointment, which I made comment earlier online, and I think it's probably circulated, is where are the bike lanes on West Avenue or the sharrows? And perhaps they were coming, I will give everybody the benefit of the doubt to say that was in the plans. But right now, I don't see them, and of course, we know that West and Wall are, and Belden are bike corridors. And I'll just add to this gentleman's, since he spoke quite at length, I will take just another minute to address his concern. The bike lanes on Belden were controversial, I pushed for them very hard. And I did because I realized it's a pedestrian area, and what those, what that, those bike lanes did, even if they're not used heavily right now, they do connect to a much wider system i- in the plans. But, what they do is they've reduced the crossing length for pedestrians. That five feet on each side reduces the actual traffic speeding by, so that now you can stand in the bike lane and only have to cross forty feet, instead of what used to be fifty feet. And people used to fly through there at forty and fifty miles an hour, and I can tell you for sure, from everybody I've talked to and my own experience of standing out there for hours in the cold watching traffic, is that people are going a lot slower on Belden Avenue than they used to. It's made it safer for everyone. So the bike lanes are not just for bikes, they're for cars, they reduce accidents and injuries for cars, they increase retail sales. They do a lot of things, and they actually get people off the, the road in their cars. Eventually, when this is a fully built-out area, people will be riding their bikes, retirees, millennials, everybody in between, children. And we will get cars off the road, but there's a growing pain, or a growing, a transition. Getting there is difficult, people find all these things easy to criticize, 'cause they're new and different. But eventually, what we're doing is what every other city is doing, we are rebuilding our city for the future. And this is really what we need to do, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road and saying, we're not gonna have this, and we're not gonna have that, we're not gonna get used to it, and we're so stupid in Norwalk, we can't have bike lanes and all this stuff.
Yeah, I really resent that too.
I don't think that it's stupid, but there are other things, yes, I think everything you're saying is positive. I don't disagree with you, and I will learn how to back-end parking. I can back it pretty well, I do it in my driveway every day. But all that parking is pretty much in areas that will impact my husband's business that's been there since nineteen sixty, but not.
That's a different, that's a different issue, I, I'm not, I'm not having a discussion with you about this, I'm talking about the plan overall.
I'm not stupid, 'cause I live in Connecticut, but I do question and I wanna know why everything's there.
I was not suggesting you were stupid, in any way did I say that?
No, I was just saying that, what I've heard and what people are saying
is somehow reverse angle parking isn't gonna work here, 'cause we can't get used to it.
I think it's far as, I think it's far as-
I didn't hear that from you, I actually heard you say that, well, you can see the benefits and I decided to equate with that. But the, the issue is how does it affect people that are coming to, to your business? So, um, but what I, what I'm hearing i- is that there's an area of, take a relook here, there's an issue in terms of understanding the traffic flows and counts as to how this is all operating. A need to actually make sure that the crosswalk is actually done and brought up to speed on this side of the intersection.
I have one more question that I just don't know if I understand.
Let me just make sure I'm getting everybody's concerns down, then we'll come right back. And then, we, we need to take a look at the issue of how many spaces we're actually gaining through here, and if there's an ability to realign so that we can pick up more. Is there anything that I've missed thus far?
Just the other plot about, would really solve their problem, and I think it would help for the library. Get rid of, the taxing district will back off that green space, you can get probably at least another ten cars and a loading zone.
Right.
And-
We're saying that that's an area to revisit.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the things that, long-term looking at is getting people from Yankee Doodle Garage to access Wall Street through passageways, like we have in Sono at the Haveland Street, where you have those walk-throughs.
That's huge.
And I, I think that would solve a lot of problems. I know that in the past, we've talked to the post office about that, and there may be other ways that we can get passageways. Then people could park in Yankee Doodle Garage and just walk right out of Wall Street.
I know, I think you had a great idea that was in, you know-
Actually, I, I thought that was, I did play quite a few scenes with it.
We are looking at that.
You are, okay.
Now, that is very helpful, because you have to walk completely around in bad weather, boy, that's it.
And there's not a customer mind that'll do that, but what about getting people from, into the parking garage, you know, when they're watching? That's huge, though. Four hundred and forty-car parking lot, nobody, none of those people use it.
She just was waiting to ask a question.
But, but when you're saying that like this, that means it just goes into oblivion. No, I, I mean, I'm just saying, it's huge, hey, you know?
That's why I'm bringing it up, because we've looked at it.
I just had a question. This, since now I know this is not the right turn except for that business, so the right turn is made from here.
Yeah.
So, will this, I assume because of all of this, you don't want a right on red, you want people to actually stop there? Because I'm just thinking that, you know, this does get backed up, and if, at least now, although people do fly, and I may be guilty sometimes, you know, you can make that right turn while you have the red light here. If you have to wait for this light, that will cause some backup at some times during the day, especially when there's buses. Because at least now, the flow from the right lane keeps going.
I, uh-
And I just would think you wouldn't wanna ride on red with all those pedestrian crosswalks.
Yeah, to be honest, I, I'm not sure if it's going to be right on red, or if it's a no turn, I don't know, DPW has-
I don't remember what the traffic's on there.
Yeah, I, I do know that the traffic engineers analyzed from every angle, we, they have a report that they issued, uh, so-
Well, we can look into that.
We can look in, yeah, I, I just don't know off the top of my head whether or not that's true.
And just so, you know, we'll have the plan posted on the city's website, and then we'll take in, we're taking in the comments tonight. Questions that came up that we didn't have answers to, we'll have those posted in the chat.
Because this, well, might your woman, because this, no, 'cause this also, there's a grocery store here, and when they- People can't get in and out when it's backed up, so if people are backed up here, they're gonna lose their access to groceries.
So, if you've spent countless hours out there watching people safely today as, because of those bike lanes, what about those people that are crossing directly across from the post office right into that parking lot?
They take a personal risk, you know, and they, and they, they're just-
Yeah, but, yeah, but that personal risk goes on all day long, every day. You gotta do, when that happens, you gotta do something about that. Something's gotta happen about that.
Do you want another traffic light there?
I think there should be a crosswalk there.
Well, is that something on the plan?
Well, no.
No, it's probably-
No, by, by, by people just saying, yeah, 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 they're taking a risk, like he's saying, it's, they're taking a risk, or you're saying there's gotta be, or, or a light, or this gotta, there's gotta be something done. Because just like you said, someone was killed.
If we're talking about traffic calming, it's an ability to do traffic calming.
You can't just say what you guys wanna address, and not what is a fact, it's a fact.
I'd like to agree with him, I'm one of the people who often goes across there in the middle of the block, and a crosswalk would be really nice. But I also just wanted to pick up on, about the parking garage, I know this is totally side issue, but I know there's at least one person here from the parking authority. There's something about the Yankee Doodle Garage, and I, I have tried to put my finger on what it is, I don't know if it's the lighting, if it's the signage, if it's the attitude of the people who work there, but it, it, it's something very creepy.
It is creepy.
And like, I do not like parking there, it's not just that I have to pay, it's, there's something very creepy, I don't feel safe when I'm going in there. So, if, you know, if anyone has any ideas about how to make that better.
Well, the stairwell and the elevator also feel unsafe, so if you don't park on the first floor, it's uncomfortable.
It, it, it's an intimidating structure to be in.
And it's better now than it was two years ago, but it's still intimidating.
Well, I would just like to support the fact that activating the Yankee Doodle Garage and making it more accessible through Wall Street, it solves multiple problems, it would solve the library parking issues, it would solve parking issues on Wall Street. Activating that alley, you know, that is parking behind what used to be Kitty Land, might even solve problems of delivery to those businesses without having to block Wall Street. So, I think that's a really, really important issue that really needs to be accelerated a little bit. And not just a back burner issue, I think that would, I think that would really work well.
We, we did, in fairness, we did spend an inordinate amount of time dealing with the post office in terms of trying to get access. I wanna say we spent almost three years in dealing with the post office on that, and it was just an insurmountable task. It, 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 it got to terrorism, it got to, to, and it was like, okay, we're talking the Norwalk post office. You know, and then they, they park, in the, their side lot there, they park their vehicles. They were concerned about, you know, vandalism to their vehicles. We indicated that we would do dedicated spaces over in the Yankee Doodle Garage and move their vehicles over there. Nothing seemed to, to, to work. But that's not to say that, you know, things haven't changed relative to the post office, and that personnel hasn't changed as well. So we could certainly go back and try and figure out either the post office site or other ways in which you can get better connections between the garage and Wall Street.
Because I think it's an economic development issue.
Can I just take Frank, he hasn't said anything to answer.
Well, no, I just, just, I just have some questions, because, you know, our, our general manager has been working with DPW and with Bruce, and he, he's, he's reasonably aware of what's going on, but we've had many adaptations of that area. As I say, we've met with the mayor and what have you, and we had just general ideas. Now, at different times, the city was gonna do it, another time the developer was gonna do it. Who's gonna do this now? Is this gonna be a combination with Polco and the city, or are you taking it over as redevelopment, is the city doing it?
The, the LDA prescribes how this works.
Okay.
Ultimately, as I said at the outset, the developer's responsibility is to develop a plan that meets the specifications of the city of Norwalk. So, at this point, the plan that, that's been developed has been reviewed by the Department of Public Works, and Public Works is satisfied that it, it could, it, it meets their requirements. Now it's off to the political and governmental reviews of the plan. And obviously, the public's review of the plan.
And then would the developer be responsible for implementing this?
No, then the city ultimately is responsible for implementing the plan. Uh, it, there is an option for the city to waive that and have the developer ultimately implement, and the city reimburse the developer for the implementation. Those issues have yet to be determined.
That's six of one, half a dozen of the other, so the city eventually is gonna be responsible.
The city's got the financial responsibility for the implementation of the plan.
And what's the next step after this meeting? When, when is the next, to show what, what the action is?
I, I think, we, obviously, we need to have another public discussion.
That, that's my.
So that, that we can, we can get to an understanding that the, the folks that have an interest in the plan and in the area ultimately are satisfied with what's being advanced to.
I thought that's what it would be, but I just wanted them to understand that. You're just getting input now and you're gonna try to implement some of the input. You might not be able to do it all, but you'll implement some.
But we need to go back and take a look at.
And back to this loop again and see what their reaction is.
All of the recommendations that have been brought up and figure out what we can do. Patsy.
Um, I want to go back to the concept of, uh, leaving the right-hand turn by the post office intact. And I wondered if in satisfying the district's request for, uh, open space, the trade-off for their land for what you're taking, has there been a square foot analysis of, of the trade-off?
Yes.
And this reflects that square footage or is there any X?
It's an, it's an increase for the taxing district.
Yeah, but keep in mind in terms, we simply said, when you're fooling around with the, with the interchange, try to keep as much open space as possible. Because keep in mind, whenever the city or whenever any governmental agency wants to do anything, they head for the parks and the open spaces and everything else. And so we simply said, try to keep as much open space as possible. We haven't come down flatly. In fact, I haven't even gone to the commission and say, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. We're just saying, don't wipe the whole thing out if you don't need it.
I don't want to represent that this has been an issue that the, the taxing district has said that you, you must replace square foot for square foot, uh, of the, the open space.
Well, I didn't think so and that's not where I was going. So Frank is, uh, preempting by reading my mind.
That's Patsy's turn.
Uh, it seems to me that keeping that lane makes a lot of sense, uh, for several reasons. But then, there could be some kind of a little park there, resting area to, because to me, it looked like the, the district was gonna be gaining some park area. Uh, so that could be enhanced where the crosswalk is and, and make a lot of sense. But, so that's one point. The second point is, you've got the new potential crosswalk on, on Wall Street and so, there's not that much difference in, in a linear feed to the post office suggested crossing uh, to the other property at eleven Belden.
Right.
So, and, uh, and then I've been at meetings where there's another crosswalk proposed pedestrian, um, on Mott, uh, less than three hundred feet off of the intersection. So I think that should be part of the record.
You don't know what she's talking about.
Oh, I certainly do. Mike.
There is a plan to do a mid-block crosswalk as well on, uh, Washington Street.
Yes.
Into the Webster Lot, uh, where there's also a lot of people that cross from the grocery store to the apartment complex. They go down the side of the telephone building. There's like a right-of-way there. And I actually called for a crosswalk there for the same reason you guys are saying. So there might be an opportunity here. You can't do a bump out on Belden, I don't think, because you would really affect the traffic. And you would lose, but you could do a bump out on the, on the post office side, you would lose one spot. But the VHB plan, the Transportation Management Plan of two thousand and twelve shows, uh, five reverse angle spots where it shows you have that little bump in where the, um, the old turn-through comes in, right there. Those, that shows five reverse angles in a plan done by another consultant, uh, a few years ago. And personally.
A long Belden, you mean?
No, it just come, it comes right in. There's a, instead of those parallel, there are five reverse angle. Instead of the two parallels that you show, so that would increase some parking.
Right.
But honestly, uh, as a, as a student of urban, I'm not an urban planner, but a landscape architect, certainly, open space includes paved areas in urban environments. That would be brick. That could be, um, uh, an air, what's called pervious paving where it lets water drain through. It doesn't have to look like a parking lot. If you made that space and you made a driveway in, let's say, off Belden, where those parallel spots are, and you made it a, a, basically a brick parking area that the taxing district could then rent out for, um, planned events on the weekends when there was less traffic, they could have tents set up and it could actually be a hard surface, which is, you know, for a little art show or whatever. But it wouldn't be grass, it would be paving. And then you could have trucks unloading, you could have an extra, probably five or six spaces in there to, to, to solve the dilemma of these resi, these business owners there. But it's attractive and it doesn't look like a parking lot. And this is, you know, it, it's funny, the VHB plan from six, six years ago, fu- whatever, five years ago, actually had, had Wall Street a festival street. A lot of people don't know what that is, but I've seen them. I've seen them all over the world, I've seen them all over this country. That's basically a street without curbs. And you kind of mix everybody up. So, you know, you have, you have people walk, everybody goes slow, they go five miles an hour. Uh, this was, this is all, these are all over Vancouver, all over Canada, they're all over Europe, they're all over Japan. United States is stuck for some reason in the last century, but we're getting there. But I don't know what happened to that festival street idea, but it just kind of went away. But the idea of this plaza at least alludes to that plan, which is basically a multi-use space that can be used for parking, can be used for truck unloading, but then at times can be used for other things. And maybe that's a, maybe that's a solution here.
Again.
But I, but I don't like the idea of flow, flowing through because people go so fast through there. That's why people get killed. And if you could just make it like a little parking area with one driveway access and then one out, then I think you're, you're, you're solving a problem without, uh, making it, making it more dangerous.
Again, I don't want anybody to leave tonight thinking that the, the taxing district has said, this is what we demand. Because all they've said is really, we want to ensure that there's sufficient open space that replaces what you're taking. What the, the concept of that open space is, uh, I think is, is an issue yet to be determined between, uh, the, the city and the taxing district, um, so. Sure.
You don't have it here. There actually is a crosswalk here where the traffic light is. Is this the same location where that traffic light is?
About that.
About, so now, though, the bus pulls up for a bus stop there. Would it still do that? Because that really, would then really block the road.
I don't know. I'm not the traffic guy.
Okay, so I'm just saying, because that bump out there that looks to be kind of, I don't know where else the bus would pull up.
It's not just the Norwalk, it's the Connecticut.
Yeah, yeah, because I.
It's that big double-decker.
Right, because they can't pull up here because of the parking. So this would be the only spot and by, you know, where the old Fairfield County, well, not Fairfield County. But then if that bus pulls up for even for five or minutes, it's certainly gonna.
Yeah, why would they even be stopping there?
They do, there's a bus stop.
The mains out there because he's a little ahead of schedule or behind.
Yeah, but there is a bus stop that people get on, you know, we have, when they're coming around. Sometimes they line up two or three.
It's, it's just strange to have a parking, I mean, a bus stop there when the pulse point is a lot away.
Well, this is not there, the bus.
It's not the transit district.
It's the, um.
Connecticut.
Connecticut, it's all the way up.
Someone that runs the Stanford, that, to go.
Yeah.
Right. Well, we can tell them where we want them to stop.
Something to think of.
And he does hang out there for a protracted period of time, too.
And he takes bicycles on the front, though.
Well, that's good.
Any other questions or concerns?
Still can't hang out there.
I, I would probably suggest that we, we take it back in for a couple of weeks and then, um, obviously, we'll post again and, uh, bring folks back together to make sure that we're.
How do I find out when the next meeting? Because I read it on Nancy on Norwalk.
Oh, I, uh, um, actually, uh, i- if you could.